Regular session of Commissioners Court Wednesday, July the seventh, twenty twenty one, nine oh one A M. That's form is established with all members of court present. Item number two, discuss and consider dispensing with the reading of the minutes of the meetings of the Commissioners Court approval signed for June the sixteenth, twenty twenty one and June the twenty third, twenty twenty one. So we got a motion by Commissioner West, second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion about the minutes corrections? Being none, all in favor of approving say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number three, discuss and consider approval of county bills for payment as submitted. So we got a motion by Commissioner Milton, got a second by Commissioner LaFret. Any questions or discussion about the bills being submitted for payment? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number four, discuss and consider ratifying of county bills as submitted. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Second by Commissioner West. Is there any questions or discussion about the bill, ratifying of bills that have been submitted? Being none, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Any general business that we need, okay? There you go.
I would just like to introduce Jennifer DiMatteo, she's doing it coming since two thousand eighteen, and she is my assistant chief deputy. So policy is important, with different, you know, different days it's happened, there's just some other process of what we do here in the court.
Well, thank you, Jennifer. Thank you. Thank you for being here, you know, as elected official after eighteen years of it. If you show up every meeting, within your troublemaker. If you don't show up, well then you don't care. It's your, as elected official, you're sitting at a no way, but I, I do appreciate all the elected officials that attend our meetings. Thank you for being here. You're always welcome, and thank you for your service down there. You did a great job.
Well, welcome aboard.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Been here since two thousand eighteen.
She's definitely an asset. She's smart if you're ever. She's been at my job for days.
Oh, really? Okay, okay. Well, thank you. You're always welcome. Is there any other general business we need to be made aware of?
Give me a mouth.
I'd like to announce that the J P three office in Will Point is complete. One from the remodel, not really remodel from the storm, from the flood, just from the freeze that we had where we lost the pipe. It's all been completed. Judge, the only thing we have to do is the, the floor, the flooring that was not damaged due to the flood. All the construction is taking the toll on it, so I have to get a, a company over there to strip and rewire some of the floor. Also, J P two is completed. I talked to Carl this morning. It's the best business. It's done with the exception of, of J P two's office, her office itself. And we'll talk about that later on about how to do that. The whole office needs to be reconstructed, but only part of it got damaged. So just want to let everybody know it's, it's been cleaned and reclaimed.
Okay. For Chrissy four, and we, whatever, yesterday got Miss Bliss's office all put back, because I would get word that it was. She had back in business in her station.
Okay.
Three second.
Three.
Three second.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, she was still six back over here. It's one second Thursday Friday. She'll probably be in one of the weekdays, and I'll get another shot for her if it's your next person. It's great. We'll look at the future, maybe add the negative Tuesday back, but maybe this. But thank you. It looks, it looks nice. It looks nice.
Would good.
And she's very happy.
That's good news. I do know that Van Zant County is participating with, I believe, Wood County, Ranch County in a job fire. Uh, if there's someone that would like more details, you can talk to Pam Pearson or Julie Seymour here at Van Zant County. I know the Sheriff's Department will be participating in this job fire. I'm sorry Pam was gonna be here this morning, but then she gets, she's got a situation going on in Will's Point, not able to hear it, and I don't have these exact dates. Uh, so, but there is a job fire. If anybody would like to participate in that, if you reach out to Julie or Pam, they, they, they'll hook you up. Any other general business we need to be made aware of? Any announcements or? Being none, we'll move to item number six, uh, public comments. Scott, can you make sign them? Okay, I've got two requests here. Deborah Johnson, okay, Deborah, if you'll step to the podium, uh, the way we do this is you have, uh, uh, three minutes to speak. Uh, about, I think you wanted to speak on item number eleven. Okay, and.
I'll be, I'll be, I'll talk fast anyways.
Okay.
Um, for one, we felt that the, I feel like accordingly to the open meetings act that the item was not sufficiently described, so that anybody, including the property owner, would know what road you're talking about, and they're talking about her personal, her property, and there's no mention of her as the property owner, or the, even the county, or the county assigned, uh, number for the property. It just, it just says anything south of thirty one nineteen, which is a pretty wide area. And so it was difficult to even, we didn't ask anything until yesterday that they've talked about the property. Um, and I think the open meetings act requires more description than that. Um, the there was no notice given to the landowner, and it seems like since they're talking about taking her, the county, that said, some of it should have been given to her. Uh, there has been, I don't know that, we've been aware that there is a lawsuit that this, uh, surrounding this property, and the judge in April, uh, did a ruling, Judge Martin did a ruling, um, saying that the property, that Rosobi's been on the property, and that Mr. Fenture did not have a right to the property. And we do not copy the judge's work without that being available. Um, so I didn't know if y'all were out loud, so go around the judge's ruling. If you don't, uh, choose to abide by what the judge said, and then, um, just wanted to show that even the Van Zant had, has this property, and even have any of these, has the property as a driveway to Miss, Miss Sarpin, so this is her house on this property. It's just showing it, so roads that drive right to her property here, it's not showing that this is the Van Zant County, the phrase of district information. Um, I was looking up some rules and, of course, we didn't have very much notice, but it, but I did find was that prior to nineteen eighty one, counties were allowed to get, uh, roads as a county road if it was made, used by the public, and maintained by the county for more than ten years. This property has never been maintained up now in, uh, as long as our family's on this since nineteen ten, and my grandfather built roads. It's never been maintained up, county never been, this is a couple of roads. And so it's an after nineteen eighty one that the transportation took away the ability of the counties to acquire property by prescriptive easement. And the only way that it could acquire property was by purchase, compensation, or dedication of landowner for a final judgment of adverse possession. But, um, it says, uh, adverse possession is not established by public use of a private road, permission of landowner, or public maintenance of the primary road, which the public interest is not reported. So it seems like the, uh, window of opportunity for counties to say this, this county road is passed. And also what I found was that it looked like that counties were required to, or advised to, um, do a county map of county roads that were established. I looked on a text stock in Van Zant County, and I don't believe that this road is listed there, doesn't have a number. But I don't know how, after that period of time, when you have the road map, you just have sixty years say, it's, it's a county road now. And can I say one more fast part? It says the county road, uh, maintaining county roads, this county road has been in continuous long use for more than thirty years. The roads have extended to the, the maintenance of the road for at least ten, twenty years, which has never got.
Thank you, Ms. Johnson. I believe, uh, Terry, uh, Sergeant, 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 Sergeant. Uh, you may step up. You've got, uh, three minutes to address the court. Uh, I think Sergeant wants to address the court on the same item, uh, item number eleven.
I'm the property owner at one three one nine seven, eight five nine. We've been there for over ten years. And the property question is my driveway. And the, uh, in this, uh, Miss Johnson's saying, there was a lawsuit. I've got a copy of the order granting, uh, the defendant's motion for, and it's summary judgment. Copy of it.
Is that the original?
Uh, this is what Judge Martin tried, yes, oh, that was not a copy.
Okay.
The copy that I turned in, it's in.
Okay.
And, uh, she's pretty much said everything. There was, I received no notification that my property was involved in anything regarding the Commissioners Court until someone in passing happened to mention it to my attorney, and he notified me. So once again, this is my driveway, and, uh, it's, my knowledge, it's never been used for anything other than accessing the, uh, property or the field that my grandfather had, uh, had harmed in the past, he died in nineteen fifty seven.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Scott, anyone here for public comments? Did, did you sign up?
I'll sign up.
Yeah, are you, as long as it's on one of the agenda items.
It's number eleven for this.
Okay, you may step up here. Uh, state your name.
Brian Fletcher.
Okay.
She has written, we're pending lawsuits, uh, require another attorney. He advised us that it is a county road, it's on a text of transportation map approved by the county commissioner, nineteen forty eight, nineteen fifty. Of the minutes, or in the records here, we have certified copies, text of certifies with their email. Say that it wasn't, hey, it's, it's never been maintained as a county road of the dirt. Coopers were brought in back in the sixties, put in by my grandfather, the county brought the coopers. I remember as a little kid going in there, we had no access to the property. And I don't want to answer the point, this is what we deal with all the time. My dad is a county server for Van Zant County. Said, what's that? Uh, man, so many blueprints over there, they can make first offices, it's not fun. Never had any issue with any of this before. Uh, it is, it is a county road, text of transportation, and I understand her previous with it. We've never accessed this anywhere. We've got three hundred bills that they cut out there, cows. We've been on these properties since nineteen fifty eight. I've given to Pearson copies of the text of amounts. The emails were sent to the county attorney. And that's pretty much all I have to say on it. We've got them locked out of the county, and get paid. But my hell.
No. Any other public comment? Okay. Being none, we'll move to item number seven, discuss and consider the use of economic development funds to support the Will's Point Economic Development Corporation for recycling, L L C. Uh, again, Pam Pearson was gonna be here. Uh, she had a situation arise this morning. So I'd make a motion to table number, item number seven.
Second.
Got a second. By Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor of table and item number seven, and I said, I think she said bring it back in August.
Yes, and she apologized. For the court.
Okay. Well, motion second, all in favor say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eight, discuss and consider fiscal year twenty twenty two interlocal agreement with Andrew Center. Uh, this is the contract we signed with Andrew Center. It's an annual contract we signed. Nothing changed. It said it didn't go up. The only thing changed was the date, right, Miss?
Right.
Uh, it is twenty two thousand eighty dollars of, just of for the twenty twenty two fiscal year. Is there a motion to approve the interlocal agreement with Andrew Center? Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion?
I do, I have.
Okay.
Sheriff, since you're here, what, what does Andrew Center do for you?
Uh, recently, because the, uh, the city built parks.
I mean, if you, I guess if you called on them.
If you call on, yeah.
Casey uses them, our engine, uh, hell, she uses, Casey says if, if someone comes in with issues over, that's where she refers him to.
Thank you, Sheriff.
Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor of approving the fiscal year twenty twenty two interlocal agreement with Andrew Center, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number nine, discuss and consider Sourcewell member, uh, agreement. Mr. Brad, is that yours?
Yes, sir. I'm looking, item number ten, relating number nine. Sourcewell's another group like Buy Board, or Houston Galsen Contract. And by joining up, then we can get discount prices on their items, and the the boom acts, and the next item on the budget is in a source well at a cheaper price than Buy Board, and so by joining them, we can save some money on next time. So I'll make a motion to enter agreement with.
Second, okay, got a motion by Commissioner LaFret, second by Commissioner Milton to enter into agreement, uh, interlocal agreement with, uh, Sourcewell. Member agreement. Got a motion, a second. Any questions or discussion?
Everything, no problem, uh, send it to the auditor's office.
Well, I actually got an email from Sourcewell saying that the county had registered the other way up in two thousand fifteen. Uh, I couldn't find any documentation, so when Mr. LaFret purchases his tractor in the next agenda item, I will have to have something to show outside of our church that we weren't going for a law purchasing agreement, so we just wanted to
Be sure.
To the court, so that I could show proof of us being a member of this, uh, purchasing group.
Any other questions or discussions? Being none, all in favor, uh, signing a new agreement with Sourcewell, uh, member agreement, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number ten, discuss and consider road and bridge precinct one, purchase in a case, International Harvester Farmall, one one or one ten A tractor with boom mowers.
Yeah, Fred. Yes, sir, I've put that on there as well. The boom acts that I came into office with, we worked hard to get back on the road. It didn't last too much longer for them. It reached a point of just being inefficient to repair. So I've looked around, and this is the, the best deal I found on one using Sourcewell, so I'd like to go ahead. I've got the money in the budget to purchase it. I'd like to make this purchase. I like a motion to allow me to purchase this boom.
A track, uh, tracker in the boom, with the boom next.
Yes, sir, it's, it's all.
In the amount of one thou, uh, one hundred thirty nine thousand, six hundred and eighty five dollars and seventy three cents.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is that a motion? Got a motion by Commissioner LaFret, second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion?
I know, I'd like my comment.
Okay.
Just to, to carry folks, uh, refresh their memory, uh, the boom, the boom act that was in one, if y'all remember right, so caught fire several years ago. And, uh, and insurance paid for that boom max, and then Mr. Brown bought a used boom max, the one that he's talking about now, that he has off for Nate Bates auctioneer. So it's, we're not just running through brand new boom mowers over there. Uh, it's, it's been, it's been an ongoing battle for precinct one, one more. So some of that stuff Chad might not have been aware of, and I just wanted to make.
I just know we've done our best to keep it on the road, but it's just beyond the ability to. Thank you for the update, sir.
The boom acts is real hard to keep going. They, they have a lot of breakdowns. All of them do. Any other questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor of allowing precinct one to purchase the Case International Harvest Farmall, one ten A tractor with boom max, say aye. Those opposed, same sign. Motion carried. Item number eleven, discuss and consider status of possible county road south of County Road thirty one nineteen off of FM eight fifty nine. Uh, Ms. Pearson, did you want to address the court?
Well, not really. I think that's one of those times I say, can I get back with? This, uh, this issue's been going on for about a year. I would say, uh, Brian came and asked, asked me over a year ago if this was a county road, and uh, I said, I, I can't prove it is. It's, uh, if it is, it's a lost county road. Uh, because it's not numbered, it's just a dark road, uh, very few people use it. It, uh, I think on the length of the road, there's one, two, three, four, five properties that could have joined this supposedly road. So he, he brought something, I had a meeting with him and Mr. Davis, the county attorney, and, uh, he brought several documents, and they're, they're here of, of lots of, lots of referrals to a road. You know, on these deeds and stuff, never a county road. Uh, a dark lane, a dark, uh, road, a dirt riding way, uh, just and then, then I went and interviewed some of the, uh, long-term residents out there, and it was the same way. The people told me, I, I can attest that there's been a road here forever, but I can't say it's a county road. And so when we, Mr. Davis told, uh, Mr. Fenture that, here's the deal, you, you bring us something showing that, that Commissioners Court was, had talked or determined this was a road, uh, sometime or another, that, that mentioned in there that, uh, court discussed a, a, a tree down on whatever this road was called back then. So it's, it's come, it's come down to a text dot map, and the map is here. It's a, my pastor's on this, the text dot map, when text dot was, was purchasing the riding way for eight fifty nine. And it's this text dot in nineteen fifty one, forty, forty, fifty and fifty one, whenever working on all this, on their map, it shows all the maps. This road shows this road and all the roads around it that are at this time, that are known to be county roads. It all shows them the same markings on the ledger. And, and they're not called county roads, they're called travel ways, traveled way. So, but if you pull zoom in on the road that's in question, the text dot has written on there, not, not Van Zant County. Text dot is written on there, county road. So, and this particular objects. This is, this is, I'll show it to you, Mr. West, this is the lane right here. Uh, this is, this is another county road, a known county road. This is the road that's, that's in question right now. And text dot is written on here, county road. Pass by, pass down.
I'm just, may I say, when was this, nineteen what?
Nineteen fifty one. And then, and then along with that, that map came to Commissioners Court. I've got, I've got the minutes right here. It came to Commissioners Court on April the twenty third, nineteen fifty one. And the Commissioners Court at that time, signed by the county judge, approved that right away map, when they were buying this right. Did you say the little, yeah, that's a little lane right there. No, so all, all, I don't know what it is, and, and let me stop right now. We're not taking anybody's problem. We're, we're, we're here today to discuss, to see if the court recognizes that, at least in nineteen fifty one, that that was a county road. And so there's, there's what I have, it's, it's not a, uh, intimate domain situation, but, uh, we're not. We're just deciding if it was a county road in fifty one. Now, the deal is, if anybody can entertain or bring us documents, start saying that since then, that Van Zant County abandoned that road, I'm good. I have not found those documents. So all I can say is that I can, from what I'm looked at, and what Mr. Davis asked for, is to prove in nineteen fifty one, this was a county road. Yes, it was overlooked. Nobody drove down it. Nobody in the fifties, other than, uh, y'all's, your grandparents and your grandparents only, only ones that went down that road. And so, uh, there, it's a dirt road, been a dirt road ever since. It probably remained a dirt road. So anyway, that's what I present to the court. All I want to do today is make a motion that the court accepts that in nineteen fifty one, this was a county road. And if something is proven as otherwise, that happened since then, that hadn't been brought before us, then we'll address that thing. So I'll, I'll put that in the form of a motion that, uh, the court approves that it's a, a, a county road, and that we move forward with the numbering process.
Okay. You heard the motion? Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay. Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Milton. Any questions or discussion?
I, I tell you, there is, there is in Van Zant County, uh, a lot of little roads, dead end roads, and there's some that connect, uh, different county roads that are dirt roads, that are not maintained by the county, but they're county road, they've always been since the forties, nineteen forties, they've always had people go through. But when nine one one came in, they, they weren't given it, they weren't given a, a, so they weren't given, but still, they were county roads, and many of these county roads that were used by the public were maintained by the, by the people on the road that used the road.
Any other discussion or comments? We have a motion by Commissioner Pearson, second by Commissioner Milton. More questions, comments, discussion? All in favor of recognizing in nineteen fifty one?
Fifty one, April twenty third, nineteen fifty one.
There. That that road be.
Yes, sir, and this is a road between, uh, Thompson Airport Road, which is, uh, everyone knows where it is, but thirty one nineteen and I twenty.
Okay.
Uh, goes to the east, only goes to the, goes down about, well, I'd guess twelve hundred feet, I don't know. Goes to the east, only goes to the, goes down about, well, I'd guess twelve hundred feet, I don't know, and dead ends.
All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number twelve, selection of the twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two elected officials salary grievance committee. We're getting ready to select the grievance committee for the elected officials. It requires, if you want to use the nine member, public member, we need to, we need to vote from the commissioner's court. Is there a motion to use the nine public members for the salary grievance committee? Got a motion by Commissioner Williams, second by Commissioner LaFrenz. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. We will draw for the nine public members. I gotta draw. And that will be the committee. And they will draw the rest as always.
Is that drawing nine from the twelve grand jury members?
Yeah, and I was gonna say, it's time, usually we have two separate grand jury in there.
That's what the statute says, what the law says. Jeremy, hit me with that last one. Zemali, Jeremy Zemali. Bonnie Johnson. Drew Short. What?
Rediger.
Come over back. Cheryl LaFrenz.
Is there a heart? But LaFrenz not.
Yeah, exactly. Thomas Mott. You got a neither one? Yes, it's hard. Roland Young Junior. That's our nine. That is the nine on the grievance committee. The rest will be alternates. We learned this several years ago, we've got this process perfected. We draw everyone. Cheryl. From Mark.
What does that do?
Russell, Mark.
Mark.
M A R D. Martin.
Yeah. I think it's Doris, that's it.
And those are, those are the members of the grand jury that served last, this, last year calendar year. If any ones, you'll send out a letter, you'll send out a letter and get one back that says they excel, Martin, or. Decline, decline. Decline. So you will send that letter out, Susan?
Yes.
And that is our grievance committee selection. Item number thirteen, discuss and consider approving the Kate and Emmett Edition subdivision plat.
Your honor, I gotta abstain from this one. I always felt like the best way to learn something is to experience it. So faced with that big subdivision policy I came into office and put in, I felt like the best way to learn it was subdivision property. And so this is my subdivision. I brought Commissioner Melton to handle, so I will be abstaining from discussion and motions and seconds and voting on this item.
Okay, you're out.
You're out. He has presented the subdivision to the court for approval. And I'd say that I think we did extra hard on him to make sure all the, all the Ts were crossed and all the Is were dotted. But he has complied with the present subdivision rules and regulations. And I make a motion that with chips.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Melton. Is there a second? Second, yeah, second by Commissioner West. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor of approving the Kate and Emmett Edition subdivision plat, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number fourteen, discuss and consider approval of fiscal year twenty twenty one budget amendments. Do you have a budget amendments before you? So, got a motion by Commissioner Pearson to approve the budget amendments. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a second by Commissioner LaFrenz. Any questions or discussion about any of the budget amendments? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number fifteen, discuss and consider monthly reports submitted by various offices, departments, accounting government, and approval entry of same in the court's minutes as matter of record. Mr. West, you have a comment?
I do, we have six of our eighteen reports in. This is the first meeting of the month, so that's really pretty good. So I feel good. I, I would accept these and make that motion.
Okay, motion by Commissioner West, accept monthly reports. Is there a second? Second, we've got a second by Commissioner Pearson. Any questions or discussion? Being none, all in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried. Item number sixteen, is there a motion to adjourn? Got a motion by Commissioner Pearson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner LaFrenz. All in favor, say aye. Those opposed, same side. Motion carried, we are adjourned.